Help them out. Um, I know we have a lot of people here tonight for uh public hearing items. I'd just like to remind folks, um you know, we have three minutes. Um, the planning commission is a recommending body. Staff is just staff. Uh, the wildlife advisory is just a technical advisory committee. Um. They, you know, all of their work is volunteer. Um, I think we can have a really fruitful dialogue tonight in a really civilized manner. Um, I think we're all just people and if we could just treat each other like people, it'd go really well. Um. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else for you at this point, but I know in the summers we will have some training, so.
Thanks Jade.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to uh item five. Uh, our action items, the first one on the agenda would be the public hearings for the Wildlife Advisory Committee Recommendation Updated Natural Resource Overlay. So Jade, are you gonna start? Or I think we have a presentation from the committee?
Oh, great. Who's sharing that? Thanks, Dan. Great. Um, we'll start with the staff report and then the Wildlife Advisory Committee will have a presentation for you. And then we can uh roll into questions and and then the, you know, the normal procedure of public hearings.
Perfect.
Okay, um, the natural resource overlay maps were last updated in two thousand and six. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners appointed members to a Wildlife Advisory Committee, the WAC, if you will. Um. These are professionals um in various fields, um, and they are a volunteer uh advisory committee to Teton County. Uh, one of the tasks assigned to this committee was to review the NROs um and help update them via an updated map. Um, at the April tenth, twenty twenty four, uh Wildlife Advisory Committee meeting, the committee did make a recommendation to update three of the seven layers of the NRO. Um, I won't get into too many of the technical details about this overlay update because the Wildlife Advisory Committee will touch on that in their presentation. Um, that I have included the two thousand and six map and the proposed uh twenty twenty three map you can see on the right side. Um. Some of this uh, the updates to the certain layers reflect the big game migration corridor and seasonal range, um updating the map to incorporate um the most current Idaho fishing game data, which was from twenty twenty two. They compiled a new report for Teton County. Um, they talked about sharp-tailed grouse breeding habitat, um. Adjustments there correcting a two thousand and six mapping error, um where a portion of the waterbird breeding migration and foraging habitat um wasn't shown on the two thousand and six map. Um. So all of these updates were based off of the twenty to twenty two Idaho fishing game data and some information from the Teton Regional Land Trust. Um, I believe the committee will do a good job speaking to you with about the specifics and about how they use, you know, a process to go through the data and then apply it to a map. Um. So I will skip that component for now. Um, the process for this uh natural resource overlay map amendment, um. This is now a formal process uh for adoption. The P and Z is a recommending body. Um, so you'll be taking a recommendation from the Technical Advisory Committee and making a recommendation on their recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Um, the review criteria for um an amendment of this nature would fall under the Land Development Code four, four. Um, which does talk about comprehensive plan and LDC amendments, but also um the NRO map is included in this because it's a map that affects the county as its entirety and not a site-specific uh zone change. So the NRO maps do not change zoning or density allowances in any case. Um, the NRO maps are um guidelines for the county to help them better understand um sensitive areas uh with development. Um, so I just wanted to explain um these review criteria and where they're coming from, from the code, um even though it's not. This is not an amendment to the comprehensive plan. It's just an amendment to an overlay map. So uh, the comprehensive plan, um. Talks a lot about our natural resources, um but I think specifically goals one and eight um talk about respecting sensitive habitat and migration areas for wildlife as well as um conserving public lands um and encouraging con- certain uh development patterns and conservation. Um, so for this reason, staff believes this natural resource overlay map amendment complies with the comprehensive plan. Um, going through, again, these maps um use data to help Teton County understand where wildlife and wildlife habitat exists. Um, they don't dictate density allowance or development entitlement. Um. Title nine, uh which is now repealed, obviously for the Land Development Code, um required Teton County to update and review the maps with the most current data every five years. Um, so we were a bit delinquent in doing so. Um. Again, um, most current Idaho fishing game data and um complies with the Land Development Code, um generally just states, you know, all development needs to adhere to chapter five, one of the Land Development Code, um which are the natural resource protections. Um, I included that here just so you have an understanding of what the general development standards are. Um, but again, we're not, we're not amending the code with this review. We're not amending uh the comprehensive plan. We're just looking at the map today. Um, this application, because it is um a change to an overlay map, uh was noticed as such, so it was noticed in Teton Valley News um as a display advertisement, as well as in our hearing schedule, um just to make sure people uh have clear access to it. And the large signs you saw were also posted around the county for this one. Um, there is no written public comment received as of five nine, so there's none in your packet. Um. That's all I have for you. Uh, the attachments include the formal recommendation, the current and proposed NRO map and um Idaho fishing game data from twenty twenty two.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Jade. Okay, I think we'll hear from the representative on the committee.
Well, I'm Ray Landon. I'm representing the Teton County Wildlife Advisory Committee. And I'll be presenting our recommendations. I'll get a little closer. Um. And I want to thank you all for uh um giving us the opportunity to uh present our recommendations. Uh, also, it probably doesn't need to be said, but uh you can ask questions or have comments on the fly.
You wanna move up front? Yeah. Maybe as a start, try to move up the front and if we do that just for. I'm not sure we have, maybe try to get a microphone or.
If you're not gonna move, then that's as loud as it's gonna be.
Any better?
Is that better?
Yes. Okay. Um.
There you go.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Say a little bit about the uh. I see. No. We're one slide ahead here. All right, a little bit about our uh, our committee. We were created in uh uh May of twenty-two and uh by Teton County Resolution twenty twenty-two oh five oh nine eight. We're all volunteers. And we're advisory, and that's in our title, and it's part of what we live by. We do, we recommend, we don't make policy. Well, let me talk about the uh natural resource overlay. It's a tool for decision-makers and a tool for developers. It identifies the county's most important natural resources, and the current approved version was uh issued in two thousand and six. And uh, as Jade pointed out, we, our guideposts were from the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. Uh, from the comprehensive plan, respect sensitive habitat and migration areas for wildlife, reduce impacts in riparian, wetland, floodplain, and other sensitive or hazardous areas by strengthening the wildlife habitat and natural hazard overlay standards. And more importantly, from the Land Development Code, the natural resource overlay map may be updated to reflect new credible information that is provided to the county. And that new credible information um is the twenty twenty-two summary of fish and wildlife resources in Teton County, Idaho, um from the Idaho Department of Fish and Game and uh data from the Teton Regional Land Trust, their monitoring data on greater sandtail cranes. Oops. So our recommendations are to update three of the seven layers of the uh NRO. That's the big game migration corridors and seasonal range where we've added updated seasonal mule deer and elk movement. We've also added mule deer and elk migration data. The Columbia sharp-tailed grouse breeding habitat where we've added um land located within two kilometers of uh known lakes. And then the waterbird breeding migration, foraging, and wintering habitat layer where we added greater sandtail crane habitat. Also on that layer, we've corrected a uh kind of as a sideline, a uh two thousand and six mapping error, error. So that's all there. So what does it look like? Let's look at these two maps. On the left is the current two thousand and six natural resource overlay map. And on the right is the proposed NRO map. Now, as you can see, there are significant changes. However, the current state of data clearly supports these changes. Well. Full disclosure, I'm colorblind, so I struggle with the maps. Fortunately, as we were developing this, uh Rob Maron, the GIS uh person for the county, was able to show us individual layers, which I could easily identify with when you put them all together. I'm lost. So Linda, if you can come up and point out. Um. If you could just state your name under the.
Linda Unland.
If you wanna go up. And the solid brown is the. Yeah, you can, you can point. Which is the largest change that the, that we had. And then the yellow gold is the um Columbia sharp-tailed grouse. And uh finally, the solid dark green is the waterbird breeding and migration and foraging and wintering habitat. I have trouble with all colors. Um, yeah, why don't you just stick around for questions? So, questions?
Ray, I'd like to go back to the origin of WAC. Who's on it? How many is there?
There's nine members and I can give you their names.
Well, let's, let's just for the respective time. Was there any large landowners, ranchers, anybody on it?
There were originally two people from agriculture, um and they have.
They did not finish their term?
And that was actually before my time, but yeah.
Since twenty-two? They backed out since May of twenty-two?
They they left, um. Yeah, I think before May of twenty-two.
Okay, cuz you. You stated WAC originated in May of twenty-two?
Mm-hmm. Right.
So there was never any replacement of a large landowner or anybody to represent the agricultural side? And so out of the nine members you have or have presently or did have, how many of them were professionals? And what was some of their backgrounds? Can you give me some background on that?
Um, yeah, professionals were uh Jeff Clausman, uh Mike Lean, Damaris Berber, Renee Seedler. And then we also have a member from um Idaho Fishing Day, Eric Anderson.
Hey, that's good for now. Thanks.
Just better?
No, it's not even mine.
I'm sorry. If you wanna sit closer, you're more than welcome, but.
About seven questions. Why didn't you just turn it up?
We're, we're trying. This is as loud as it's gonna get. Okay, I'm very sorry.
I watched you on the Zoom before and look at you. I'm not being critical, but you're thirty feet away from the microphone. When you watch this stuff on.
Okay.
You can't hear me. It's gonna let on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. We, we, it's, we're operating within what we have here, so I'm sorry.
Okay. I had a quick clarification. Can I ask a clarification for the two thousand and six, the mapping error? Were you just adding in what was missed?
Yes.
In two thousand and six to that?
No changes. It should have been in there, and it basically was hidden under other layers of the map. And it just was kind of a chance finding along the way. So gi- give us a sense of, of the, the committee was created in the May of twenty-two. You met a certain amount of times. You had, was, was, we wanna, I, let's get a sense of how robust the conversations were, what, what was the dynamic of the committee? We started meeting in October, um, October of twenty-two. We had um also in our, we had our first meeting in October, and uh just prior to that, we had uh we all attended a open meeting law training session uh in October also. We meet once a month. Um, however, when we were uh really actively involved uh with going through uh creation of the overlay, uh there was times when we were meeting once a week occasionally and uh more often every other week. Okay. Any other questions for Ray at this point?
Uh, on the, from the the data collection, were you doing it primarily from the fish and wildlife study? Or was there further data collection?
There was, well, two things. The fish and wildlife study was the primary uh data source. And then um monitoring data from Teton Regional Land Trust specifically on sandhill cranes. They have been monitoring sandhill cranes in the valley for twenty years. And that, that then was made available to us.
Thank you.
So was that the land trust primarily info- information source was, they didn't give you any other microns of data in regards to other wildlife, other than the sandhills or?
The sandhills was the, the formal data that they gave us. We did have a, we, we do have a member from the land trust on the on the committee and uh who was providing information along the way. I, I wondered why the, on the northeast corner of the map, the, the large, you, you know, that, that whole corner is national forest. So that was added to the map. But it's not the county. Right. So, so, cuz people visually are looking at this and saying, whoa, you know, trying to compare, but that's not. There's some of that falls outside the county line. That's true.
There's natural forest in V L N.
Right.
Um, but the color, that's, that's the problem with it. Um. Up here is national forest.
Yep, in that top corner.
So really, that's somewhat irrelevant to the exercise here, right?
Yeah, I thought.
Okay.
Well, they have the brown paintbrush in their hand.
Other comments, questions? Maybe not at this point, but you know, I'm sure you'll, not at this point, but we might have you back. Okay? Thanks. Very good. Well, thanks for your time and, and questions. Um, okay, uh, we're gonna uh open the public hearing for comments, which I have. If you haven't filled out a sheet for Sharon, it's deliver over. Um, and you'll take comments from Zoom as well. Um. I'm gonna try to organize these, so we uh stagger them between maybe those who oppose and those who are neutral and um. So I'll start that. You're gonna have three minutes. Make comment. If you come up and state your name for the record, um. And uh, we'll time you and I, we're gonna be somewhat strict on holding everyone to that in the uh interest of giving everybody the same opportunity and the interest of time for tonight. So um we'll start with uh Anthony Wilcox, who would like to speak in opposition. State your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Anthony Wilcox.
Thanks. Go ahead and make your comments.
I want the taxpayers to know that to be on the Wildlife Advisory Committee, you must answer eleven questions. One member answered the question of why do you want to serve on this board by saying, invited by Commissioner Whitfield. Tell me the system is rigged without telling me the system is rigged. The Chair of the Wildlife Advisory Committee answered all eleven questions in thirty-eight words. Further proof that the fix was in bef- before this committee ever met and that they were merely going through the motions. By the way, that same chairperson also owns a company that happens to perform the required wildlife studies and will have been gifted a lifetime of work if the proposed natural resource overlays are approved. As far as anyone knows, Mr. Clausman never formally disclosed his conflict of interest on his application to be on this committee. And even if people casually knew of the conflict, state statute title seventy-four, chapter four, and title eighteen require that the conflict be disclosed in writing and be vetted by a legal expert with a written determination. Common sense also dictates that the conflicts of any board members be disclosed and vetted. That never happened, and Mr. Clausman is not alone in the conflict of interest question. Commissioner Whitfield has said on record that anytime a conflict would arise that would impact Mr. Clausman's business venture, he would abstain from the voting. There is zero evidence of this in any meeting minutes. Action of this type is required by law to be documented in the meeting minutes. The work of this committee is forever poisoned, in my opinion, because the chair is going to financially benefit from the new proposed maps. The only remedy I see is that Mr. Clausman and Intermountain Aquatics, that he is a co-owner and operates, will have to refuse work in this county or the county is going to face more legal action for allowing this blatant violation of law to exist. I also want the taxpayers to know that myself and others, on no less than five occasions, publicly pleaded at various public meetings with the Board of County Commissioners and the Wildlife Advisory Committee to acknowledge, correct, take action to fix this massive conflict of interest. At every opportunity, the Board of County Commissioners has told us in so many words to shut up and sit down. If you don't believe me, go and watch the videos. My second and final comment, I am calling into question the legality of this hearing. The Wildlife Advisory Committee, that is currently under active investigation by the Jefferson County Prosecutor, along with the Board of County Commissioners and the Waterway and Recreation Committee for violating the Idaho Open Meeting Laws, has not posted any meeting minutes as required by state law since December sixth of twenty twenty-three. How on earth can we be having a public hearing when the public has been denied access to the meeting minutes for the last five months? They are the record of the, that the meeting even happened. At this point, I have to believe that the continued violation of the Idaho Home Meeting Law is a willful choice by both the Board of County Commissioners and the Wildlife Advisory Committee to conceal their work from the public. Furthermore, the county has outright refused to publicly post recorded videos in the Wildlife Advisory Committee.
That's your time. Thank you.
For the taxpayers to see what they are hiding.
Sure, that's your time. Thank you.
I wanna finish.
I, I know you do, but we've.
You wanna have me arrested? I just need ten seconds.
We've set the rules, so everyone.
If we have any money to hire parking lot tenants at the boat ramps, then you surely have a few dollars to pay for video storage. I'm pleading with you to recommend against this.
Thank, thank you.
Just for the record, last county commissioner meeting, someone spoke for ten minutes uninterrupted.
Thank you for adhering to the rules. Okay, uh, Mike Regliano would like to speak neutral to the application.
Can you hear me? Yep. Okay, I'm soft spoken too. Uh, my name's Mike Regliano. My address is on the sheet. I really don't say much about where I live, but I started thinking about it. I live along Darby Creek, uh where they split. And um, that was the old George Stone homestead. He did that about, oh, right after the railroad came in. So it's kind of a symbol of as the valley switched to more subsistence, kind of not so much a cash basis farming to more industrial. He was a cattlemen. He didn't last very long. My wife, Linda and I are the third owners of that place since about nineteen eighteen. In nineteen seventy-five, a fellow named Gerald Wagner subdivided that area before even the Idaho subdivision law was passed. If you look at the county map where I live and my neighbors live aren't even on the subdivision map, cuz it isn't one. Um, Ava looks like one. And then Wyatt might appreciate this, maybe. Um, I was on a tour with the Henry's Fork Waterstead Council. They did a subdivision tour of the valley. This was in the nineties. Kind of what they were going through, and that was when subdivision really taken off. And, and we're just driving back to Driggs and passing my house, you see from the highway. And uh Janet Penfold, who was on the commission here, kind of stood up, and this is kind of a humorous story. I don't mean to pick on anybody. She stood up and pointed at where I live and said, now that's what we don't want. And um, and I was kind of stunned in a way, cuz I was like, what? Why? And I never asked her. I should have. And um, but I think it's because if you even look at it today, it's kind of rough looking. There's a lot of native vegetation. There's a lot of shrubs around it, trees, sagebrush. It doesn't look like anybody lives there. My driveway is just two-track. So very crude, which is what I like. And um, also, it's kind of a little more conducive to wildlife, cuz there is more native vegetation and structure, that sort of thing. I'm trying to get more sagebrush back, that sort of thing. So it's a little odd, I think, for subdivision. Um, but in my view, it may be a way. But in my view, it may be a way of the future is to look at subdivisions more as since the county is more interested in wildlife habitat. As agricultural lands go into subdivisions, there could be a chance to improve them and some landlords want to do that to wildlife habitat. So I think there's kind of an undertow here with the plan and the the thinking of the county. A lot of wildlife, and I'm not trying to pick on agriculture, but agriculture is development is is development too. You know, when we think development, we just think residential. But agriculture is too. Is that it? Wow, that's fast. Okay, so we should think about that too.
Okay, Matthew Strong would like to speak in opposition. Okay, just state your name for the record.
Matt Strong, I'm opposed. I think it's going to cause extra burden to the landowners. They won't be able to do with their land what they have intended to do. They want to put up a barn or something. It lands in the wrong place. It's going to cause more studies and more fees for them. It's undue burden. It's going to cause more taxes to the landowners as a general for the entire county because the county can't seem to stay out of a single lawsuit because of more overlays and more maps that we're we're unaware of. Another circumstance is they say it's only a map, but this map is a study by a board that if the county sees fit, they're going to use it how they want to use it. We have another circumstance on some other stuff with the flood floodplain issue. And they say it's only a map, but there's parts of it that aren't available to the public, but yet the county is using it to try and enforce code, which is succeeding a state law and as my opinion. So I still want the same thing to happen here. So thanks.
Thanks. Uh, Ben Brown. Speak your name and
Ben Brown, and I'm opposed to it. All in all, it's just another way to take the rights away from private landowner. And I look back at the things that happened in 2006. They come out and they did the overlay. And we never had any of the rough grouse or shark tail grouse on our property. And yet, right now, right through the middle of one of my homes, we can't do anything. We can't renovate. We can't do anything without doing all these studies because they come put that in. And they say all this wildlife overlays for the wildlife. Anybody that's come out to my place knows the wildlife live there whether we live there or not. They sleep on my lawn. The deer are there all the time. The moose are there. And we got some other birds that are moving in that aren't native to the area because somebody planted them in there. Don't know why they did. But my recommendation is don't put this before the county commissioners and let them put it into effect. It it really is. It's a theft of the rights of the private property owner. And there's not one person here that owns property that wants to destroy the wildlife on their property. It's just not that way. But yet we have all these people come in here and say, you can't do this. You can't do this. You can't do this. My family's been here for over 100 years. And the land has been built up. Wyatt knows what my place looks like. He's come out there and saw it. My great grandparents build it, starting with a shack built out of one befores. Had to had the codes we have now. They had never started anything. They wouldn't be here. My family wouldn't be here. And it comes up and we we don't believe that you shouldn't have codes and things you got to enforce. But this is ridiculous, this map being put out. It doesn't change what the wildlife are going to do. All it does is change what rights the landowner has on their own property. That's the only thing it changes. It doesn't change the wildlife one bit.
Thank you. Uh, Charlie Cook.
My name's Charlie Cook. I'm opposed. And I really, really don't like being there. I've got mixed emotions. I'm sad and I'm mad. This is an overreach. This government doesn't seem to get enough of what they don't need. Is want more and more and more. And at what cost? Who's going to benefit and at what cost? How much is it going to cost each individual? So I'm told there's 41 lawsuits against this county. One of these days, we're going to get one we can't afford as taxpayers. And you're pushing the you're pushing the limits of this kind of stuff. I'm going to borrow a line that I've used that I'm fond of. It's time to raise our title of liberty. Now, some here may be familiar with that line. To protect our families, our religion, our property. I got my family, but it's more than just blood. My neighbors. I knew their fathers and their grandfathers in a lot of cases. They had lots of rights and inch by inch, they'd been taken away. I have a religion. Suffice it to say, I believe in the 10 commandments. But I love it. Mind your own business. And I think this county is pressing on that mind your own business. They're not going to be impacted by this decision. They're just going to put it on us, the taxpayers and the consumers. So I'll protect my family, my religion, my property, and I'll take a bullet to do it. I'm not upset about this. It's just overreach, take, take, take. I never hear anything said about protecting property rights, just taking property rights. And I've had a gut full of it. There's an attitude out there. Why even come here? They're going to do what they want to do anyway. I think there's some good intended people on this committee. I know for sure there are some. So it's time for a change. And that's going to have to be done at the polls. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Kurt Beal would like to speak.
Hello, hopefully you guys can hear me okay.
Stay.
Yep, my name is Kurt Bailey. So thank you for hearing this, Planning and Zoning. I just want to start off when this wildlife group met, I think, I heard a comment that was first met in October, but it actually met the first day. A day after the land development code got voted in, at least as far as what the website has for on August 4. Um, but as you can see from the map that you guys had earlier, the big game regression overlay went from 26% to 85%. And we continually hear in meetings that it's really not that big of a change. But as you can see, it's significant. Another major problem on January 9, 2023 is where the board voted in that all that required any parcel under consideration for technical review now have these overlays on their property. So even if you had your application in for a year, two years, those still were having to go back and now had an overlay on their property and needed to conduct these reports, which in many cases have now been redacted. And the people are at a major financial loss. Um, I can tell you too, this board after the open meeting violation that was admitted by the county on February 5, 2024, the complaint came in January 17, 2024. They had 14 days to come out and deny or be responsible for this particular violation. They waited past the 14 days, which opens them up to a bar of imposition, which is a civil action. This Wildlife Committee on a meeting on March 6, which I attended with some others, uh, one of the suggested motions was to vote back in the meeting minutes from a violated meeting from October 14, 2022. Well, the Board of County Commissioners, when they sent out their report on February 5, showed that there was a meeting on October 13, 2022 that was in violation. That there was no meeting ever on October 13, 2022. There's one on October 14. And you can't go back and vote in meeting minutes from a violated meeting. One of the things I continue to hear is that these committees yourself or Waterway Committee or the Wildlife Committee, it it doesn't matter whether you're a voting committee or not. If there's any type of conversation, any recommendation that goes towards the board, that's also all these members of these committees are also held in the same responsibility as other committees. So if you look at the open meeting law, it's any action, any deliberation or decision making that leads to any other action. So any deliberation or any conversation during these meetings are important for the public to be a part of. You can't just go back and vote in meetings that no one ever was advised of or the public never knew of. They've also quoted on their January 9th or January 29, 2024 meeting to reapprove meeting minutes from private previous meetings. And they even misquote the Idaho Code 74208 of any action taken during these meetings is now void. It's not any action. And I just read what that is. It's any action or corporation.
That's your time.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Uh, David Breckenridge.
I'm David Breckenridge from Tetonia. Uh, all these overlays, the biggest thing that my concern is, is that there's not specifics what we're looking at. If some group actually comes up and says, per se, the land trust comes up and says, we're interested in cranes. You got to put that on the thing. You need more specific of what you're looking at and what you need to accomplish. The comprehensive plan talks about they want agriculture. That's what more. But the wildlife or the wildlife overlays you're putting is actually diminishing agriculture. I can't, I we've been trying to make some ground for my father passing away and the because of these overlays is making it difficult. It might be that we have to sell some just because of the different processes we have to go to because of these overlays. And to me, that's really a big overreach for the county. And it's more centered that we have people that has well, I'll put it this way, it's become to known that that these overlays are just an object to help to make the person building spend more money. Because there's no, there's no record of actually this stopping or helping or anything. It's just a study you got to do. So I kind of request maybe that we calm down a little bit on what we're doing. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Uh, Ida Hanson.
Could you give me a 30 second warning before my time is up? I would appreciate that. Uh, my name is Ida Hanson. And thanks for all you do as a planning and planning and zoning board. Um, I went to the first meeting and I specifically asked who the farmer rancher was. Mike Whitfield said, oh, that's Lynn Bagley. He's been on our committee since whenever. So I called Lynn Bagley and Lynn Bagley told me that he had not been invited to any of these meetings for over three years. That's a problem. Um, so it's 54% of private property that this overlay map is is covering. And I don't have a problem with the overlay study. The entire valley is a wildlife overlay. I have a problem with charging residents a ridiculous amount of money to do studies from the for and from the friends of the B O C C, which is giving them lifetime jobs. The planning department points at a map and says, oh, why can't we just go to the planning department, have them point at a map and say, maybe your building envelope should be 10 feet this way because this is a wildlife category, uh, wildlife corridor. Mike said that, and and I asked specifically this twice at two different meetings. He said that overlays cannot stop building. The only purpose I can see is a harassment to new builders in the valley, local and anyone else who would like to build here. Does the overlay help the wildlife? There is absolutely no evidence that it does, but there's evidence that buildings and the things that we plant do help the wildlife. I'm going to talk to you about the Teton Regional Sand, uh, Land Trust. Um, I'm going to tell you how they counted the sandhill cranes. They drove 35 mile an hour with two people in the car. One person was the observer find them. The other person was the observer, uh, count them. And that's how they got their numbers. And if if somebody flew over their car, they could count it if they thought it belonged in the same place. And their very last statement said, please note, Canadian goose from can often be forging in the same fields as cranes. Be sure you are only counting the cranes, not geese.
Yes, sir.
Geese are smaller statue and have shorter necks and backs and are darker in color. Does that sound professional to you? Not to me. Cindy bullied you guys into turning the L D C code over to them, told you that there was no more money. You passed it to them and you gave them several suggestions on what to look at. One of them was getting a diverse committee together. None of your suggestions were used. Look at the mess that that letting the BLC take over that has caused. Please, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Derek Ellis.
It is Derek Ellis, and I'm here to speak as a concerned citizen. Um, thanks for taking my comments today. I I have great respect to the families we're hearing from today. And when I moved here, one of the things that really attracted me here was actually a lack of government um, oversight and kind of the uh, the hard work and entrepreneurial uh, spirit of the people in this valley. However, in the 30 years I've been here, I've just seen things change and it seems like we're at a tipping point where I feel like we're going to lose, really lose some of the things that make this place special if we don't do something. And I'm glad to see something being done. It's not perfect. Obviously, it's unfortunate with problems with the process. But I I am supportive of uh, the overlays and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Harley Wilcox.
Good evening. I'm Harley Wilcox from Victor, Idaho. So these advisory committees to citizens of Teton County appear as though we're sending the wolves to pin the sheep. Basically, the people that are doing the studies and the people that don't want growth are creating the rules. Their slideshow said the most valuable resource in our valley is wildlife, and I want to disagree. I think our children are our most valuable resource. I think if you can't allow for affordable housing in our county, then our children are going to have to move. I want my kids to live here. I like my kids. So I ask, what evidence has been presented to identify a need to expand these wildlife corridors, these wildlife areas? I live in one of them. This isn't going to impact me because I've already got my building permits because I knew these guys were doing this. The voters are actually the ones that have the decision. I'm going to ask you guys to recommend not adopting this map. I don't have the time to go into why, because three minutes isn't enough time to explain all the reasons why this map should not be adopted. But I hope that you guys will recommend that they don't adopt this because then when they do adopt it, at least they'll understand that it's just them. It's just them. It's the people that they appointed, they hand selected. There's no advisory committees that they appoint that has any uh, opposing values. They don't, I sat with these guys. They don't pick people that want to come up with good ideas and want to make hard decisions and discuss topics from two sides of the fence and decide what's best. They select individuals that are parallel to their ideology so that they can pass what they want. All you have to do is go back and look at the meeting minutes. There's a map hash marks for public land. You take only four of the landowners that are not uh, private Forest Service, Teton Regional Land Trust, protected in perpetuity. So those are still uh, private landowners that have a truck as of 2019, 11,000 acres. State BLM fishing game. Only those four come to 67,651 acres, which is 23% of our county. Look at that map. How much is really left in white? If you add all this blue, because that's the uh, wetlands. How much is left? 10%? So 10% of the people that want to do anything, which I bid you to go to this document, Natural Resource Protection, Absecability, All New Development in Teton County. Okay, after you look at that one.
Thanks, Harley.
Then I want you to look at the definition of the document because Then I want you to look at the definition of the document, because even building a house makes you develop.
Okay. Andrew Burns.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Burns. I live at eleven eighty Stephanie Street in Tetonia. And my testimony today is regarding the canvas back subdivision.
Do you want me to wait for that? Yep. Those are both things. Okay. That you'll have to wait till later, a little bit. Okay, Penny Vasquez.
Jim, I want to, nice to see you. Can everybody hear me? Or do I need to talk louder?
Just talk, Penny. Just go.
Okay. My name's Penny Vasquez and I'm going to suggest that you table this until you get more information or not pass it at all. One, for the reason that the board is under investigation for public open meeting laws violation. Also, the agenda did not come out to the public on the website until this last Friday, May eleventh, and maybe if more information had been available, people could look at the different perspectives. There were no videos done during these overlays meetings. And at the March sixth and March tenth meeting, Anthony Reynolds did an excellent discussion about them, which would have maybe helped you guys form your decision. And had I known what was on the agenda, I would have forwarded to you to look at. Wade, thank you for asking the question of who was on the board. I only ever saw seven members when I attended. And on their creation paper, it says there should be a rancher and a farmer, but a broad spectrum of members. And Marshall White talked at a B O C C meeting where he thought the board wasn't diverse and maybe they should have had a reset. But I want to read you something from the comp plan. Under Idaho Code six-seven-six-five-oh-two, Teton County has an obligation to regulate land use in order to promote the health, safety and general welfare of the public. This plan strives to provide a balance between private and public property rights. I want to ask, how does the overlay help the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, not the wildlife? There is nothing in this overlay that helps the wildlife. They could have talked to the transportation department, more signage, education to people. Cars are probably one of the most detrimental things to the wildlife. And I agree with everyone who has spoken in opposition so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to Zoom. And I'm sorry.
Is, is there a multiple on Zoom? Should we have anybody who wants to talk raise their hand and then you can just call on them? For us, Jade, that'll make life much more so they're not just me.
Yep. So if you're on Zoom and would like to speak, if you can, not sure how to raise my hand on Zoom, but there's something on the bottom. And then Jade will be able to identify you and unmute you and follow you when your time. So we'll need you to raise your hand.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
That's the first one you want? Hold on just two seconds.
Just second.
A J R, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, state your name and you'll have three minutes to comment.
Understood. So my name is Anthony Reynolds. Penny just gave me a little shout out. I had something written, so, but I'm going to kind of go away from that because a lot of people had, you know, gotten into a lot of things. But my problem with this whole issue is I've attended the meeting since, you know, since they've been improperly noticed and I wanted to go see what was going on. I'm against the overlays, per se. But when I went to the meetings, it started to, it was very apparent that no one in that meeting cared what the public had to say. The last meeting that we were, that I attended, I brought up that the Wildlife Committee just basically took figures from the information given to Teton County from Fish and Wildlife and put them on the overlay without looking into how they were made. And when I brought that information up, people in that meeting had not read the study that made the paper that Fish and Wildlife Center. The Fish and Wildlife Study, the paper that they sent them about wildlife in Teton County in twenty-twenty-two, referenced two ungulate studies for the U S G S, and both of those studies were collared data studies. And those collared data studies are actual points. What the Teton County Wildlife Committee did is they took an overlay, which was figure four in that paper, which basically was a generalization and extrapolated version of where animals might go in the winter. That, by the way, encompassed Tetonia proper, the actual city center, part of the airport, and multiple other places that everybody sitting down, standing up there know that animals do not go. And they just pasted it onto this G I S map and said, now we as homeowners are going to have to pay to prove that that's not a wildlife corridor. The data that was in the ungulate study for U S G S had collared data info. In that study, when you reference it under the U S G S, it had collared data information in the paper. That data was then extrapolated to get their movement for herd size that they then looked at into this, into this map, which does not cover a fraction of what you, what was just shown a minute ago. That, what was shown a minute ago is figure four, which is generalized. We're going to now take and make homeowners pay money to prove that they don't have wildlife when we have collared data that says it's not there. I'm well aware it's not all collared data, but they do this for a living and they extrapolate it out. And some of the area and some of the map that they used had a section in it in which one animal had walked in nine years. In nine years of data, one individual animal had walked that space. And then they were going to charge people and homeowners to prove that that is in a wildlife quarter. Like, I understand the need for it and I understand what they're trying to do, but overreaching and just picking up a figure out without going back and researching.
I have to interrupt you. That, that's your three minutes. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. J B Farone.
Hi, hello. This is J B Farone, Driggs. I first, I want to thank everybody for coming and thank you to the board. But I am in support of the wildlife overlay. I think it's a huge driver in why people want to invest in this county and be here, and the fish and wildlife are a huge reason for that. And anything we can do to support that, I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Tason Rockefeller.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, Tason Rockefeller, not really here to carry on one side of the discussion or the other, but bring, wasn't playing on speaking either. So thanks for taking me on here. I'm looking more at the Land Development Code as written and then comparing it with whether you want to call it the old Natural Resource Overlay Map and/or the new one. And some of the issues that I see, I write articles and blog posts to try to educate the public and I benefit from using that in my profession, but one of the things I learn when I review some of this and the implications is how does it impact our day to day? And one of those, as an example, or any of these examples, for that matter, I use the Land Development Code frequently and I use the search feature on my computer. And when I search, for example, songbird or big game migration, or really anything that's identified as an overlay on the G I S or the map, I don't get a result here on the Land Development Code. I know we were in the process of a red line and adding some changes to this Land Development Code. I think that was rushed far too quickly. I think there are a lot of things that need to be addressed, and one of them is this specific issue. I'm hearing a lot of people who are unhappy with this or who are in favor of this, but none of us, at least I, don't understand what it means, whether it's implemented or not. I did ultimately find the National Natural Resource Protection Section of the Land Development Code five dash four. But here again, I don't understand what it means if I do have a property that either I represent or own that falls into this category. So I really believe that the, before anybody starts implementing anything further, there needs to be a clear understanding of what this means. If there is a sentiment that does resonate with me that I'm hearing, though, is the cost of some of these studies. I do own property. I'm not going to identify whether it falls into an old or a new overlay, but it is a wetland overlay. And I learned that the cost of a delineation was about forty thousand dollars. So one of the questions I have here, if there is an overlay, whether it's new or old or otherwise, what does that mean? What are the costs of these studies and how are they implemented? And I think that's something that the board and the commissioners really need to get a handle on to understand what, what this means for property owners when it comes to these studies and/or applications. And I think there's a lot of that in the code that needs to be addressed. And for what it's worth, I'd be glad to be involved in that at some point. That's all I have to say, not speaking one way or the other, otherwise, but to point out this important topic. Thanks.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Presley Wheeler.
Hi, yeah, my name is Presley Wheeler and I have a degree in Fish and Wildlife Management and I moved here to work in this industry and to recreate here. I think it goes without saying that most of the citizens in this county live here because of the natural resources, no matter which way you choose to recreate. And all we want is for these natural resources to be considered before altering wildlife habitat forever. And I stand in support of the revisions to the wildlife overlay. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else, raise your hand. Otherwise, we've gotten all the comments, I think. Give it another second here. Okay. Somebody else?
Anything in the chat?
I think there is one more online.
There may be one more. Hold on.
This is Kevin. Can you hear me?
Okay, yep, go ahead, Kevin. State your name for the record.
Yeah, Kevin Mayberry. Just really quickly, I think there's a couple of things that, at least I'd like to point out. I think there's probably not anybody in the room or in the county that doesn't care about the wildlife. So I think kind of breaking it down to say, I, I support this, so I care about wildlife, or if I don't support this, then I don't care about wildlife, I think is a generalization that we should avoid. Because I, I think everyone probably does. I think the real question becomes is, is this the best way to actually protect wildlife? And having gone through some of the studies, putting the cost aside, I, I've talked to some of the biologists that have done this, you know, they were doing studies for downtown Driggs on a quarter acre piece of property. And they would have to go down there and, and look at it and charge a thousand dollars to essentially say, you don't need to do anything. So I think we're making a lot of generalizations that it's going to protect the wildlife when I'm not sure it really is. All it's going to do is, is add a cost that, that really reflect on to everyone. I, I've also heard people say, well, it's only a thousand dollars, it's only twenty thousand dollars, it's only fifteen thousand dollars, but we, we have to multiply that out. And so I, I would really say, let's protect the wildlife, but let's actually protect the wildlife, not maybe in certain circumstances of this, pretend that we are when we're really not making a huge impact by making this general of the map. Thank you.
Thanks for the comment. So we think that may be it. Good with that? Okay. Normally, we would give if anyone from the committee would like to, to speak to any of the comments that were made, there's an opportunity to do that typically. So I'm not sure, Ray, if you'd like to say anything in response to some of the comments. You don't have to. It's just to field that up. And just state your name again for the.
Ray Landon. And the only comment that I'd like to make is that in addition to the overlay, we've also developed a process for its implementation. And I think at some point in time, it would be beneficial for you all to hear about that process. I'm not prepared to go into those details tonight, though.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this agenda item and open up for discussion within this board. Who wants to go first?
Hand him a solid can of worms.
Yeah. I, it might be, I, I'd actually like to start with Jade, if we could. Where's for me? She's having a conversation. Jade?
Jade?
Jade, when you, I, I wanted maybe you to start by, again, circling back on what the purpose of this map is and how it, you know, we've heard a lot of comment about how the map, you know, will have an impact on property rights and, you know, development and ability for landowners to do things. So can you, again, just give us the context of where this map fits and, and and within those comments relative to how it affects your right to develop on your property?
Sure, Commissioner Waters. The maps are guidelines for the county to help us understand where wildlife and wildlife habitat may exist. The Land Development Code regulates the densities in your zoning districts. Natural resource overlays don't regulate your density or your ability to build. It may, however, shape where you build on your property. For example, if someone was in an overlay and, you know, this study came back and said, you know, this section is really sensitive, or here's where the big migration corridor is. One of the recommendations that may come out of the study or may come from, you know, if you're going through a subdivision application through development review, might be to, you know, put a building envelope here or keep development on this side, so this is still a corridor. But it's in no way or shape, or excuse me, it's in no way determining your density or giving you a lesser density than the zoning district already does. The Land Development Code, I, you think it was brought up that it talks about, you know, all development need, are subject to section five-four. That's accurate. The Wildlife Advisory Committee is also working on a policy to help interpret, you know, what does that mean? Because, you know, it's not every building permit should trigger a study, right? And so that's, that's been their conversation and their next point of action is to go back in and take a look at this and figure out, you know, is there a way to do an abbreviated study? Is there, you know, way to be less impactful on an applicant who's just building a home? You know, if you already have a house, but you're building a guest house, if you're within a hundred feet, do you need to do anything? Are, are you already clustering? Are, are you already clustering your development? And the answer to most of those questions is like, yes. Um, so the committee is also working on this policy uh, to make it more clear how, you know, the building and planning department should interpret section five four. Um, but yes, as it currently reads, you know, all development would, would be subject to section five four and proving that, you know, they're not impacting those, those uh, natural resource protection criteria.
Thanks. No, no, not, not, thank you hardly. Read the code. Okay. Other thoughts?
Well, I, I do think we're, we're handed this map and it's uh, it's something we're supposed to make decision on. And we're now being told that there's going to be a tool set that goes along with it to help make those decisions. And I personally would like to know, when I do this with work, if I set a policy for what my staff are going to do, I like to make sure I have a tool that allows them to enforce that policy. Without it, there's just a lot of, there's no clarity. Um, and I mean, we have the current maps as they stand, and we've had plenty of subdivisions that have come before us since I've been on here where we've had to take those into consideration. And there's been a number of them, if I remember right, where there's been big immigration corridor across the whole.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, right? And it hasn't stopped subdivision, it hasn't stopped the applicant from being able to work within the constraints. I think it's been maybe a little bit less difficult for most because it hasn't impacted as many. Um, this obviously has a significantly larger footprint, so I think the toolset is, is necessary to, to be able to really consider its impact. Uh, and I think it would help answer a lot of questions for a lot of folks that have commented on both sides. To know that there's going to be some other determining factors that are used in that process. Yes, there will probably be costs. I think having a better understanding of how that works though. Um, both for us as a governing, I guess not really a governing body or recommending body. And for those that are going to be going through the application process. I would feel a whole lot more comfortable knowing what that toolset looks like and knowing that the community has also had a chance to try and process a little and ask some questions so that we're not the question and answer scenario for, for this. And I, I, I don't know how we can get more information on the rest of the process. Um, some, some clarity from, you know, maybe, I don't, I don't know if it's Jade or if it's um, you know, Mr. Reyes or, or someone that can talk to some of the other concerns in the future around the open meeting acts and, and that side of things. Um, it is a little concerning when there's a lot of that brought forth, that we then have to have this other thing on our shoulders. You know, it's not, it's just not cut and dry.
And I'm glad, because my, my big concern is we've all read those natural resource studies. And personally, if you were to take and just change the names, um, ninety percent of them, they're exactly the same thing. And so I, I have a real hard time just being spoon fed this. Here you go, all I did is change the name on the top and halftime you get through there and it's, and they missed a name where they didn't change it. And to not have clear, this is why we're doing it, this is what you gotta show us all those little points. I think it's just too much overreach into everything we're trying to do because all we're doing is regurgitating information. And, you know, I look at this and now, you know, a lot more of the counties are going to have to do that same information that really doesn't show us anything. I look at all land up where I farm and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, I got a bunch of it in that overlay and I'm like, I see one elk go across here and I don't ever see a mule deer. And I see more wolves go through it than anything else. Why are we really worried about regulating that stuff? I mean, I'll be on the middle of the field in my tractor and they'll come up and stand there and look at me. So having that much extra overlay in places where you might see something is really hard on me. As, as I look at what's mapped out and most of the things. And to just cause that much more, I mean, flipping heck, there's a bigger deer herd living in Driggs than there is anywhere else in any of those other overlays. And, you know, did they take that into account? What are we going to do about our, our population of deer inside the city? You know, they love it. Because it keeps all the predators and everything else away. And so, you know, I have a hard time and then not having those you know, the steps you were talking about. This, 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 you know, these are the parameters that were within, these are what we're actually looking for to go along with. Our blanket change will definitely help me as I sit right here.
I, I personally don't think we should do anything without knowing what those steps are. Because it is not clear and, and the, what would help this process a lot, I think, is transparency and so knowing what those proposed steps are. So that like, for everyone that wants to see this overlay put in place at, in the, in what's provided, without all those steps, it, it just puts up roadblocks for too many people. So I, I think from a fairness perspective to everybody that's involved, we know what those steps are, it changes the dialogue. We can put context to it, people can actually think through, if I was applying to do a subdivision or do a change on my property, these are the steps of the process. That I think would go a really long way. Um, and we're here to try and help that process. So I, I feel like we're, we're missing a big tool. Regardless of what the map says, we're missing a significant tool to be able to even look at them. Which I know that's, that potentially prolongs this um, process for everybody involved, but.
But yeah, I think, I think we're better off to, to have everything in place before we send this on because it takes just as long, well, probably will take us longer to fix it once it's there than to do it now. Especially since we're already working on some of that.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of in agreement. I think for me, I'm kind of comparing it to what, to other items we consider as a board and it's like for a traffic study, there's, I'm not a traffic engineer or an expert, so when I'm looking at that, I have in my idea like of that, that study can, it contradicts what I know about that road driving that daily, when, when they come up, oh, we're going to have no impact on that. Um, and that's kind of what I'm seeing with this, where there's um, well, with our, the comp plan and the land development code, there's an obligation to update these maps and the, the two thousand and six map, I think everyone can agree it, it needs, it needs clarification. I think with what the new one that we've gotten, I think I can, I'm in agreement in terms of sort of the maps, but um, and a couple of people have, have commented on this, but just, for example, the seven layers that you're going off of on, when you get on that overlay. I think that each overlay should have, it, it should be clear to landowners, not just developers, what those steps and what studies it would be that, that would entail for our, and a a songbird raptor breeding. Then it's, this is what you would do and here's the, because I, I do see it being a complicated issue when you're um, when you have development standards, but what those overlays and what those, that protocol is, isn't very clear. And I, in my head, I'm thinking this a little bit. That's almost a separate issue than looking at the map. And so I'm trying to to see how that, how, how that falls into place with these updated overlays. And I think this just goes back to the, the new L D C, but when, one thing I've run into with, when it's talking about development. And I have noticed that there's uh, there's confusion regarding um, building a, a new house or a guest house versus a development proposal. Some people think the new code, that development means, oh, we're building a home, we need to follow these, these overlays. And so I think if there could just be a little bit, there needs to be um, more clarity for sure. And if you're in these different overlays, what does that constitute for studies and because right now I think it's, it's very vague and and difficult to.
Yeah, I, to, to me, the map doesn't stand alone. It's a reference for the code, so it, without knowing the process of how to interpret that map, it's almost like we didn't give a key on the map for the colors. Right? Like if we looked at the map and there was no key that specified what the colors were, it, it, you wouldn't know what to do with the map. You have that key with the colors, okay, you know what these overlays are. Now when you go to apply it with regards to the code, it's missing that key.
Yeah, I, I think that um, I think that's, that's true, but we, there is an existing map. So there is something that, you know, so I, I break this down into what James, you just said, you're just trying to separate between the map and the code. And it's hard to do. I agree with that. I'm, I'm also just trying to get my head around what was brought to us, which is the, the map. Right? And the work that was done to update the map. And, you know, you know, recognizing the procedural issues that were brought up tonight by cer- certain folks, but, but um, you know, like a committee went through a process and came up with a new map, a revised map. Now, on the other side of it is, how does that map used in the code? And I agree with that there isn't clarity on that other side. Um, and I'm trying to get my head around do they, does it all have to be done, you know, at once or, or do we, are we looking at this map? Because ultimately, I don't think it's our, I don't think our role here when the board of county commissioners creates a committee to um, um, update the map. I don't see us sitting here starting to subjectively amend the map itself, just itself. What, what I agree with the concerns about, if the map, most of us think of these overlay maps as being used when a developer comes and wants to subdivide. Right? And, and they're, they're going to make an impact on a parcel of land and we can, want to consider wildlife in that process. What's, and, and that's been the, the process in the old code, in the new code. Um, what's changed here is that, you know, that definition of development, which is a broader um, definition, and it includes somebody who, you know, has a house and wants to build a barn or build something else. So I, I, I agree, there needs to be, that, that really should be clear so people don't, you know, can understand what the code says, how it speaks to that, how it, how it um, how will the impact in the individual, and I would hope the philosophy of of, of, you know, the, the board of county commissioners would be, you know, yeah, if you're going to develop as a, as developer and it has large impact, you're going to have to do studies. If you are an individual landowner, I would hope, you know, when you're going to build something fifty feet from your, your, your existing and it happens to be in the overlay, that, that the end result is you're not having to go through hoops to do that, but we don't know that right now. So I, what I'm, you know, we are a recommending body, you know, we don't make the decision here tonight. We don't say, no, you know, you know, we, we, we're going to make the recommendation to the board of county commissioners with uh, wh- whether that's, you know, not to move the the map forward without clearing up these other things? Or is that a condition, you know, or a recommendation that, you know, I, I guess I'd, I'd like to hear, are we, how do we feel just about the map? You know, with the fact that, you know, there's been an expansion in the, in, in the map based on the data that was presented to this, that this committee used. And, you know, are we comfortable with that element or not? And are we, you know, and, and do we, you know, we still, I think we all, from what I'm hearing so far, you know, still want clarity on the other, on the, on the, how it's implemented within the code. But there is a map right now. What was presented to us tonight was, there's an expanded map. What do we think about it? And so I, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on that subject itself. Um, recognizing the other side.
So I'm gonna start at the top and I'm going to wind up exactly where you left off. Uh, Tim, and that is that uh, I'll start at the beginning, when WAC was formed, the advisory committee, um, there's a few of us that were probably serving at the time of the of the why did my, my mind slip in me already? The land development code, um, with the land development code, and I'm sorry, the comprehensive, remember when the comprehensive plan went into effect? And we all met for like a year and a half, discussing the comprehensive plan. Well, the comprehensive plan actually talks about trying to have diversity and I, I think you, you served on that comp founding plan, I think you did too Wyatt, and I know I did. And we had diversity on that advisory committees that we individually represented in those individual committees to advise on the comp plan. And I think uh, the WAC uh, did not follow that procedure, in my opinion. I don't think they had any large tract owners or landowners or farmers to have a diverse conversation to develop, you know, and I, I think that a healthy, a healthy plan comes with healthy communication and conversation. Um, I've been the lone wolf in a lot of conversations from the city to the county. And I've had friends occasionally in conversations. And I think that's something that was missed on this information that was provided by the WAC. Um, the other thing I was gonna, there was a few other things here, but you know, going through the the, the mapping and everything. Uh, the fishing game on figure four actually has all these uh, highlights uh, proposed of where uh, these areas of elk movement and whatnot, and even have a crosshatched where it says, you know, this is ma- majority of the elk movement. And then it's also on, on the figure there, it says generalized high use. So they're generalizing that area as a high use. And if we all go back before ninety-five, you know, when the wolf was introduced and growing up in this valley and seeing the dynamics of elk patterns and game patterns, and they've dramatically changed. They truly, truly have. You talk to anybody that's been here for a period of time, the elk and the deer, I mean, you hardly ever saw deer in Driggs. And you, you never saw an elk behind the brewery over by the fairgrounds. That, that was a newbie. That's new. And I'm telling you why, because the, the predatorys come in, the wolves come in and I'd like to see how that correlates because I guarantee you, you know, on the first map that was proposed in oh-six of the corridors and the wildlife overlay. You know, it pretty much holds to the stream channels, you know, Bitch Creek, North, uh, North Lee, South Lee, all those little tributaries that are coming off of there. And, you know, we all know that that's where majority of the game used to survive and live. And that's where the predatorys come in and push those game animals out into the fields and the pastures, and that's where they're wintering because they're much more safer around residentials. They really are. Because the wolves are, once they figured out wolves can get shot, soon as they figured that out, then they, they hide in the shadows. They're a pretty intelligent person. And I call them a person because they think like a person. But to back up on all this, I think that there is definitely some information that is valuable here, but I want to get to the crux of this. And that is why do the, we, uh, and I think a couple of things were said that were key in this. Wildlife is not going to change off of this map. Wildlife have already developed their patterns. What we see today is pretty much what we're going to have in another ten years. I firmly believe that because of predatory and hunting pressure. Hunting and predators is what influences a lot of this. A lot, a high majority. And with that being said, And with that being said, I think, why do these this zone, what what is the benefit of having this zoning? Well, I'll tell you the benefit that I believe it is, and I know for a fact, I had two different people come to me in the last three weeks. And said, hey, I went to get a uh, guest house permit. To build this nine hundred square foot guest house at my property. And it's in this corridor. I have to pay sixteen hundred bucks because it lands within this zone.
Overlay.
And this overlay. So he's gonna have to pay sixteen hundred bucks. Because he's in this overlay, this new overlay. And then another individual said, hey, I gotta build a shop, and I went in to get a permit. Four thousand square feet, and I gotta pay sixteen hundred bucks. So you got all these sixteen hundred buck checks coming in. And that's the impact for the same report. And so, and that shop and that house were literally like three hundred yards away. And they're still being told that we're gonna have to have charge you sixteen hundred bucks to do a study. And to figure out whether or not baby elk are being birthed in your backyard. Which that happens. I've tripped over calf elk six feet off of a bluegrass lawn in Tall Grass. I've seen it. And it happens. Why are they birthing in your backyard? Cause wolves ain't there. That's why they're there. So back up for this, and so what I'm saying is, I think that the impact, when we talked about what is the impact in the development, when you say development. In this overlay. Development is a nine hundred square foot house. Development is a fifteen hundred square foot shop. And it's generating this money that's coming into the county or the, and who's benefited off that? That's my biggest question is, and I don't know the answer to that. Where's all that money going? And then lastly, I want to round off of this and say. You know. We just went through a map uh, review on the AOI in the city of Driggs. We just say, this map, look at that color shade. It's not quite right, and you know, it needs to come down this line, whatever. Well, this map ain't right neither. That we're looking at, guys.
Which map?
The the one that we're looking at tonight in discussion. And lady, sorry, Lindsay. Guys and lady, but um. It's not accurate at all, because it does, it's going over top of National Forest, be a lamb. It's not accurate by any means. And and lastly, again, I want to say that the information presented to us uh. Is is been broadened and widened, even based off the fishing game report. Has been expanded even beyond. And why? I firmly believe it's all about money. Because obviously, two two people have come to me and said. I've got to pay sixteen hundred bucks now to get a building permit. So this map isn't accurate, and I think you're right, Tim. What can we do to further this conversation? Do we table it? Do we converse it? Do we agree? Do we disagree with how it's being presented? That's in the crux of what we are as advisory committee. Is it accurate?
And I think I, when you say that, I I can agree with everything you say, and then I. In my head, I also can't, I don't have the, I don't have it in front of me to show. Or to confirm that all this, all the fees that we're using is for this reason, or it's the the map's wrong. What I'm looking at is just. The map that was. Done to update based off of the comp plan for these, to implement the overlays that was done by, whether that's fishing game or. Research from the land trust, so I'm. And that's kind of why I brought up when we look at other. Proposals or subdivisions, there's a lot of things that we look at that we're. Having to interpret, but we're not the experts on. And so when I. Hear your comments, I'm not. My decision isn't to disagree with it, but I I maybe I'm viewing it differently in terms of. I support. An update to the overlays, and I just. I'm gonna, I'm going off of the the maps that were provided by the experts that were. Implemented for this, not that in my head, and that's why I brought traffic is like certain. Times in my head, I can say, well, that's not accurate, like you just said, with like some of these. Sections, it may not be completely perfect, but.
Yeah, none none of us are biologists, and we we don't sit here and and say, and just because I've been here for a few years and say, well, the wolves used not be here, and I've never seen elk here, now I do. I mean, I got my own dang theories. We all got our own theories and opinions as we sit here, but we are an advisory board, and I think. The only thing we can go off is what the information presented in front of us, and then we try to make the best judgment and say. I agree, this is accurate. No, I disagree. This is not accurate. And that's really what we have to come to a conclusion in as advisory board. And honestly, once again, I'll slide that little sliver under the, under your fingernail again. Where's the money going, and what's the purpose of it?
I have some thoughts I'd like to share.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Um. I guess I could go back to Tim's request to talk about the map and where Wade just ended. I am, obviously, we've all been saying we're not wildlife experts. This map is, I see in comparison from the old one to the new one. There's one really, really dramatically different overlay, and that's the big grain, big game migration migration corridor and seasonal range. I wonder if just having like different densities. Applied to the map could be useful um. That could inform the tools or the process that Tyler is referring to, that you're all referring to um. In terms of having. More tools or a way to interpret the map and understand what to do with it. It seems like the. I don't know, it's it's a dramatic difference from the old map. To the new map with the big grain, big game corridor. And to me, that sort of sig- that makes me slightly skeptical as to the accuracy of it um. So I'd like to have more information about that um. I do think that. We need to update the map. I'm in support of that, wholeheartedly. If it's, if it was done last in two thousand and six, and we're supposed to be updating things every five years. We're really far behind. So. That could have been the thing that sort of. Created some urgency behind this and perhaps. A less than ideal process um. In talking with the process or keeping on the theme of the process. There was a lot of mentions of conflicts of interest, and I don't. Think that we need to spend a ton of time on that, but I do think that there is. Um. The way that our process is set up currently is that a developer has to hire. Their own wildlife. Um, expert, wildlife or environmental expert. And that is inherently a conflict of interest for the developer to be. Finding their own person and paying that person or organization, not person, sorry. Um. I think that needs to be changed as well. I think that's just as critical. Otherwise, um, none of this really has any legs if we're. If developers have an incentive um. Or the, sorry, if the experts have an incentive because they're being paid by the. Developer to. Say what the impacts are. Um, to determine that. I think that. Um. I don't think that this is the only tool to protect the wildlife that we have. In the valley, and I would like to see some of those explored as well, but that is not part of this discussion to me. And so just in closing of my thoughts, I. Am in agreement that I think we need more information.
Thanks, Lindsay. Um. Well. Again, I guess we go back to the. You know, are are we making recommendations, what what came before us with recommendation on this map? Not the code.
Right.
Not the other things. And the fact that that's, there's not clarity there has created this. You know, conflict um. I, you know. I mean, we all sit on, there was a public comment about some of us have good intentions. I think we all have good intentions. There's, I think the committee had good intention. I don't. I I I think they advocate for for. Wildlife, and they took the information and, you know, that was given to them, and they created a map. It's probably not a perfect map, but I don't know how we're gonna get a perfect map. I'm more concerned about how it gets implemented in the code. And how it it potentially costs people money that. Since you're some of your points, that when it necessarily. You know, it's just another burden that shouldn't be there. Um, I'm very clear, if you if you're gonna, to me, if you're gonna subdivide a big piece of property. And you're a developer, I think if you're in the overlay, you you know, you 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 gotta, you know. Deal deal with the studies that are required. Um, it's the individual I'm more concerned about, but I don't know, I'm I'm struggling with, you know. Um. You you know, how we. Resolve that, because ultimately, what's coming back to us is is map. You know, that's what we're supposed to be approving or recommend, we're not even, we don't have authority to approve it. We're just either recommending that the map move forward. I mean, we could make a recommendation that move forward. And that these, that but we wanted, you know, these other, you know, things need to be clarified. Um, we want to see those, or is that, is it? You know, do they have to be in tandem? I mean, we all know. The process of amending the code and that that it sounds like it would be, or these policies, I I guess. Jade, ultimately, I the question tonight is, you know, are we making? A a a recommendation, uh, uh, that's all we can do to the board of county commissioners to. Uh, uh, approve the map, but we have, how do we deal with these other things or not approve the map, and we still have these other things? That. That are open and and confusing to folks.
Um, good question, Commissioner Waters, uh, great deliberation, mission. Um. You're correct. What you're looking at tonight is just, just the map. Um, because that's what was required to go through, you know, the stringent legal noticing requirements and and the posting and the update. Um, I think if the planning and zoning commission would like to make a recommendation tonight, they're more than welcome to include. Um, for for approval or for denial, but they're more than welcome to include. We also think you need to look at X, Y, and Z. This needs more clarity, or you know, this policy should be. Polished before the OCC adoption of the map or. So and so, so um. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the 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 frustration for folks that have spent the time to come here for all of us, I think, is is. There's a hyper focus here. We don't make the decision in the end. So I want to get it to a place where a decision can be made. But I and I don't want us to get. I I I think, at at least in my experience. If we start. Dissecting the map itself. I don't know how, I I I don't know where that, you know, that that to me becomes, we haven't. Like this committee was formed to create this thing. And they did it, and it and then expanded it based on, you know, new information, and that. We already live in that environment to some extent. Now more people will be affected for it, and so for me. Uh, you know, I don't. I don't have, I I feel like this committee did their work, presented it. Um. It it may not be perfect, but I'm okay with the map. I'm not okay with the other side. You know, that that it's not clear where the map gets implemented, particularly from. Right, for individual landowners. So in in my mind, I would say, okay, well, let's, if for me, I'd say, well, I'm comfortable moving this map forward to the board of county commissioners. With a recommendation that they don't approve any map until they've clarified within how it, the policies of how it's used. Uh, but that's the way I feel about it, and I know everybody has their own thoughts, so. I'll throw that out there.
I would agree with that.
Did anyone have any other questions about? Recommendations or motions?
Cause my thought on the map, Tim, is it's no different than, it's no different than the city. Because we are trying to. Move the lines of the city. They've already been through all the same thing that this has been through. That's what, that's what we're here for, is we're here for a different opinion on what we see here. We gotta bring our points into it. And we know as soon as it leaves here, that's as far as our opinion is gonna go. On this. So me personally, I would take out ninety percent of everything on the east side. I might leave just that little corridor right along the big holes from Victor up and around. And. That's what I would send you, and all that extra. You know, cause if you, if you, the easiest way to look at it is if you go to the GIS and the natural resource, and you can just click between the two. Different overlays right there.
Mm-hmm.
That's about all that I see. Should be added is just that little bit. Along the east side.
Urban interface or?
Yeah, on the west side, because. That's all foothills. We know that that's all. Where they're gonna be, you know what? The elk have already changed, the deer have already changed their migration, and we've been developing through that the whole time. There's developments all across. Everything on the east side, so why are we pulling that in? They're gonna come anyway. I mean, flipping heck, clear down into Driggs.
But there still will be. I mean, this isn't, this isn't stopping.
No, this isn't stopping development, but it's actually creating a charge or a permit or a study. And. I I think that's what we need to remember. It's it's not, and I don't, I don't believe it's gonna stop development. I think it's gonna cost more. Well, to the, the regular Joe homo.
No, that's, that I agree with you there, but 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 if if somebody wants to develop a hundred acres. They ought to, you know, and it has wildlife that, I I mean, I I I think we go through it, we're gonna see one tonight. You know, it's in the overlay that they, all we do is make recommendations to try to. Uh, mitigate for that. We we don't say you can't develop your land, and you can't do it at the density that you're allowed. We just say. It's a tool to, but so I, you know, I, like I said, why, that's my problem is I. You know, you have an opinion on, you know, this could all come out. I might have a different one, and I I don't have an informed. Opinion. And I'm relying on this committee that spent all the time. Now, I I I can't. You know, as much as um, you know, anybody can question anybody's agenda, I just, I, you know, they did the work. I I, you know.
My devil, but Driggs, we could say the same thing with Driggs. Should we just pass all their stuff through? I mean, we've got Victor coming tonight. Should we just pass all their stuff through too? Or should we, yeah, all the AOI stuff?
I think there's a complexity level here. That and and with the AOI, we had some other context and tools. We had existing development that was around it. We we were already working within a a set of constraints that we're all, I would say, familiar with, like the the rule set was. Quite a bit smaller. This is. The the people that should be interpreting the map from the data perspective should be the experts of that data. That could be contextual.
It's highly contextual.
Experts, but it also could be.
I I my surveys up in Darby are probably a lot better than anything the foresters is doing. Because I'm there. I can tell you how many elk are coming down, I can tell you when they're in my fields, when they're not, all that kind of stuff. And if I look at the map and you actually zoom in. That whole east side is nothing but subdivisions across there anyway. So what's what's the point of adding more, more bureaucratic BS? On top of that, if I want to put a a house in any of those little spots, if I'm gonna put my second home in. Then I have to go through more of the bureaucrat.
Well, that's what, that that's what we hope is addressed, but but the point is, the point is, in my opinion, is. That the comprehensive plan, any work that's been done, wildlife has been, you know, at the top of the list of what people want to preserve. Right? That's what they value here. So we're basing a lot of this on what the comprehensive work said, which is basically.
We're not preserving them. They're gonna be here no matter what we do unless there's five bazillion of us here, and we just start running them over. Because that's the only thing that's killing the wildlife.
We're having, we're having a philosophical debate, but but I, but I think, but I think the problem is. We're not gonna get anywhere with that, cause we're not all gonna agree. We're not gonna get anywhere with that, cause we're not all gonna agree perfectly on that. And I, we all have. Uh, and so how do we come to a decision? Cause we're not gonna leave here without a decision. Cause we're not gonna table this and ask people to come back. You know, we're either gonna recommend that.
I agree, yeah.
This moves forward with a, with a positive recommendation for, on the map or it's not. And so that, I mean. It, either way, it's gonna move forward, right? Uh, uh, it just, it seems like. Um, I, 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 I feel like we, you know. They're, they're just too different. We're not gonna come to some consensus that. That this is the right way to, you know, to, to address, not the map side of it, the, the, the code side of it. I mean, that, that I, I think would have to be for me, part of the recommendation that, that, that's dealt with before any. Final map is approved. But.
I personally think that. Tim, your suggestion of. Uh, saying we're okay with the map. But we don't, we don't recommend that the B O C actually implement it until they have. Further processes that accompany it might be acceptable. I, I also personally would. Would like to see perhaps a map that has a little more complexity to it instead of just. I mean, the brown, the big game area is such a dramatic change from the old one. I, my critical thinking skills, which you can. Say are great or bad, but I personally think that I would like to see that more. More detailed. I don't believe that it's just a, that, that we can have like one. Uh, one rule that says you have to have, you can have more studies, but there's no determination of. What those studies are gonna be until you talk to the planning department. I just think we need more complexity to the map personally. And I get that that is a lose-lose situation for taxpayers in the county because. No one wants to spend money to pay a developer for a better, better study and nobody wants to pay more tax dollars for a more accurate. Blanket study. I get that, but. My personal opinion is I would prefer to have a more, um, a more complex map.
I agree with Lindsay a hundred percent, cause I just honestly, I feel like this is a. Seven-year-old color project that didn't follow the lines. I, I feel like. You know, you zoom in on this map and, you know, it, it cuts into a little bit of Victor and then it dips into Driggs and. And then it goes around this one little house or this road and then it cuts off the corner of the end of the road and picks up the cul-de-sac and. I, I'm just, I don't feel like there's any rhyme or reason in all reality to the complexity of the map and it's not. I mean, it's, and back to the, my comment earlier about the fishing game. This is a generalized winter range map. They're generalizing and I feel like. The WAC or whoever, I mean, and, and there, I understand there has to be some type of a generalization. I mean, you can't, you can't get so dang critical that, well, I've never seen an elk across, you know. Trump Road or something, you know, I mean, you, you, you just, you can't say that because they're gonna go wherever the heck they want. I mean. Elk and deer, obviously you're eating apples and people's grass in town all winter long. So I, but back to my, my comment again. This is generating money and where's the money going and why is the money, you know, why is one guy gotta buy a permit and one guy doesn't? Just because his property, half his property is colored brown? I don't know.
I feel that, um. So I'm not typically a person. Who wants to benefit developers or sign up for policy that benefits developers. I do think that the burden of development should be on developers. At the same time. I do also think that. Uh, wildlife conservation is something that the community does get behind. And that spending a little more time on this. Might. Might be worthwhile.
So. Thinking of it from the perspective of, um. The, the, the things that I'm hearing, so. The, we have lack of clarity around the associated costs that could and are coming from. The current map in, in the process, right? That's one significant problem. The other is, the process is unclear. We don't know the process and how it's affecting. Anyone that's looking to do development at the larger scope of the word. Uh, those are the two things, if, if we're going to recommend something, say. Say we decide to recommend this map as it stands. Those two concerns would have to be met, I think, regardless from all the things I'm hearing from all of us.
If, if the county commissioners agree to.
If they agree to do it, that's our problem. So I look at it and.
We could deny the map and they could still.
I mean, I.
Decide to do that as well. So I'm, I'm just trying to think of, how, how can we voice, voice our concerns in a way that. Has the potential for the most constructive. Process when it goes forward. Um, so that when it is presented to the public again with the board of county commissioners. These things have to be addressed and talked about so that they can make then that decision that hopefully. Nails down as many, like we've all said, this is not gonna be perfect. The map's never gonna be perfect. The process is probably never gonna be perfect, but if we can try to come to a place where we can recommend something and they can then make a decision that gets it. As close as it's gonna get this go around. We're obviously gonna do the map again in five years, or we're supposed to, so we're gonna get to do it again. Um, how do we make it so that one, we don't skip and have to do it every ten years? Um.
Well, and the thing we forget, it says we're supposed to look at the map every five years. It doesn't say we're supposed to change the map every five years.
Consider.
Yes. Well, and the advisory body thought that there needed to be changed from their considerations. So we're taking their recommendation. Based off of their findings. To Tim's point, we have to recommend that the board of county commissioners. How we see that map can go forward or say that we don't want the map to go forward at all, I, I, you know, change.
Yeah. And then the, the new elders do say, you know, the, the natural resource map may be updated to reflect new credible information. And I think that's at least part of what this whole advisory committee was doing is providing. That information, that additional information, so I. No, that's part of it.
And, and I think that information changes from winter to winter. I mean, wildlife, they're gonna move. Differently with two hard winters versus two dry winters. And so, I mean. The, the problem is, is when. Inflation happens, this is maybe a bad scenario, but inflation happens, prices increase and then. Do, how often do you see it drop other than gas prices? They drop a little bit, but. When the pipe, local pipe supply raises their prices, do they ever retract those prices even though they're? Goes back down? No, they never do. And so. Do, I, and that's my hesitation. When we approve something that is in front of us, that is vast and brown and big and brown and. Kinda looks like, yeah, brown, uh. Are they ever gonna be retracted and reduced and shrunk? No, that's why I'm looking at this from a perspective that, you know. Once you, you pass a law or sign on to something. Is it like poking a stick at a cow patty or is it actually gonna turn into something? You know, what, what's it gonna evolve into? Is it gonna become a bigger beast than we can handle? Cause I don't.
This is kind of like details and I, yeah, I think one for, um, at least when I think of data, there is data that. It will show an increase in elk population and then it also has years where there's a decrease. So I don't think that just because. There's data coming out that it's then gonna, every time they. Re, address it or, or reassess, I'm, I'm not saying. One way or another, that that's gonna necessarily be the case. I just, it's more of. We had a committee that provided data from, I mean, a lot of it fishing game, for example, they, I don't know. And that's, I'm not the expert. I don't have how they tracked them or. Or the, um, what goes into all that. I just been looking at the map and I think a lot of these issues are. Like Tim pointed out are separate.
Hey, I, I've got a question directly on the map and can we have the chairman, can I ask any questions then?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead and come up and we'll see.
Just Ray, you need to state your name much more time.
Ray Landon again.
Okay, so, so Ray. With, with all the changes you've made mainly on the big, big game corridors, okay, how is that? Change gonna benefit the wildlife in those areas to now start having studies that say that they're there?
Uh, it's not so much to say that the wildlife is there as to say. What the habitat is saying, that's really what.
Like support habitat, like grass, feeding grounds, birthing grounds?
Yes. For, for the, for the big game, no, it's, it's very much habitat things.
Okay, so.
You know, the fact that you see, um, wildlife this year and don't see it next year. Um, there has to be some love and protection of the, of the habitat because this is. Low elevation, you don't often think of that in Teton Valley, but it's low elevation, wintering grounds.
Sorry, would you mind speaking in the microphone?
Lynn, Lindsey can, can't hear you if you're talking a little bit. Um, so if that's the case, stay over by the microphone there. Um, so if that's the case, then how does bringing Tiwanat, Saddlehorn Ranch? Loopin Meadows, all these big subdivisions that are already there. How does that help with elk habitat when they're not really gonna be there? And that's all drawn in on your map. You know, I can see including. The nature conservatory ground where there's nothing, you know, there's some blank spots, um. Up at the upper end of Hastings Ranch, there's some bigger, bigger parcels along state line, those kinda things. But how does bringing in a whole bunch of subdivisions and planned subdivisions? Help? With that, with that mapping, you know, I'm just trying to figure out why this line was drawn and you just didn't. You know, because there's people there, there's already developments, there's already this kinda stuff. Why do we need to include that in this map? And then you didn't include places like, um. You know, down a little further in Trout's Reserve, you know. Down into Dry Creek, all those other places where we definitely do hit a lot of game. On, you know, when we go around the corners and that kinda stuff. So, just a few questions on how, how these lines are supposed to help rather than. You know, did we just pick, well, we're gonna go two miles away from the state line and that's where the line is gonna be drawn?
Two miles away from the state line.
Yeah, that's about what yours, about two miles away from the state line. On your, on, everything on the east side, that line you driven down the east side. And then you bring it clear into Driggs. You know, I can understand following the Teton Creek, but that's what I'm. I'm trying to see how this map is actually going to help the big game in those areas. Above and beyond what's already helped, they're actually getting by the subdivisions keeping the wolves out and all those other things that are. They're actually protecting them more than this wildlife over the way it's going.
I don't know that I, I, I would agree with that, um. W- once again, trying to preserve the migration corridors and the range for. Uh, for that wildlife.
Okay, so the subdivisions or ranges for the elk and the, and the mule deer?
Interesting question.
Just, just wondering, just, you know, how.
Why, why we didn't draw around subdivisions? Is that really the question?
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out why the lines were drawn where they are, other than. That was where the, the forest service, when you read their report and their report goes back to. You know, two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen, twenty nineteen, you know, it's all. Not quite as old as what our first drawing was, but. It's all older data as well.
And, um. Yeah, I'm not sure I quite have an answer to that, but. Um, we, uh. We, uh, worked as, as best we could to incorporate the latest fish and wildlife. Uh, studying and, uh, I think. Right now, the map is. Pretty much accurate. I, I guess I would really take exception if you're, if you're point, Wade.
If it is, but what, what greater benefit is doing a study going to do for the wildlife? Because the development's gonna happen anyway. It's gonna happen there. And when you look at these, you're, you know, I gotta pick on east side because everything on the west side is at least in the foothills. And I agree with a bunch of that until you get out into the big open ranges and, you know, all that farmland that's out. Uh, at the north end of the valley, but I have a hard time thinking. That the overlays are gonna help protect the wildlife anymore than what they're already be, being protected. By causing a study to happen in those areas.
May I ask a question that is kind of, I think, try, getting at the point of what Wyatt is trying to say?
Thank you. I, I need your help to clarify my thoughts. I appreciate that one.
Well, Wyatt, and I also just wanna mention that there's another member of the W A C online raising her hand and, um. She probably have some, has something helpful to add if she's allowed. Um, let me try and clarify first though. Um, Wyatt and others have stated. And they are not the wildlife experts, though they have a long history in this valley and they. See wildlife often, they are working outdoors often. Have made a claim that wolves are the primary driver of. Um, the opposite of wildlife conservation or. That they are detrimental to the big game more so than development is. I think that that may be at the crux of this because I just heard. Um, the gentleman on the W A C, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Um, I heard you say you weren't sure that you agreed with that and I was hoping you could expand upon why you don't agree with that.
That would, that would be good.
That's fine, Renee, if you, um, if, if you'd like to add to this as a committee member. Is it Renee? I'll state your name also for the record.
Will do. Thank you. Um, yes, this is Renee Seidler. Um, I am on the Wildlife Advisory Committee for Teton County, Idaho. Um, I'm not sure I totally followed Lindsey's question and, and I would. If, if I'm to answer that, I would love a repeat, but, but if I may. I, I wanted to go backwards just a little bit to the, and I, I'm, my sincere apologies. It's hard to see the different faces on the planning and P and D committee and so I'm not sure. Which, um, commissioners are speaking at which point, um, but I would like to address the question about. Why these lines were chosen, um, especially the big game, uh, migration. Um, outlined the bright, brown polygon on the map. Um, so the, that information came directly from the two thousand twenty-two. Idaho fishing game reports specifically done for Teton County, Idaho. So this is. Idaho Fishing Game Report specifically done for Teton County, Idaho, so this is. Um. Uh, it it. Idaho Fishing Game, of course, operates across the state, and so it is. Um, challenging for them to focus down and drill down to just one county, but. Um, I I count ourselves as very lucky to have this information. Um, this, the polygon that they put in that report that we derived. Our overlay from in my mind is is very accurate, I used to work for Idaho Fishing Game as a biologist. Um, the benefit of, um. Having these layers. So if somebody wants to develop a particular parcel. These layers are not necessarily going to stop, are not going to stop development. It's going to help direct how the development is but best done on that parcel to protect the resource. So if there's a mule deer migration going through a piece of property that people want to, a developer would like to develop. It aids the county. In working with that developer to ensure that what that. Developer puts on the land is in the best place. Leaving the best habitat on that parcel available for wildlife. And then to sort of like, um, go to the question of. Drawing around, drawing this polygon around existing developments. I I can understand the question there for sure, it seems like a no brainer, and our W A C. Went through these, we kinda went back and forth, hey, do we create holes? Where we know holes should be? Or do we leave it as we know that this is the generalized best habitat for big game or, um. Uh, grouse or, you know, et cetera, and if you start to get really complex and you do this in a fair and scientific. Balanced way and you try to pull out all the little neighborhoods that are already developed. Then you've got to chunk down all of the polygon into all of those little, you know, to the level of being the smallest neighborhood. And then it becomes really quite unwieldy to use a layer like this. And so. I I don't know if that was a a logical explanation, but. From a user's point of view, it it will get complex if we start to get down to itty bitty parcels. When what we're trying to do is convey what's important to the wildlife, does that make sense?
No. Wildlife. The wildlife. Goes down corridors is where they like to be, they don't like to be out in the open. When I think of. Migration, those kind of things that truly affect what the animals do. It's not in the flatlands, it's not in the fields, it's not in the subdivisions, it's in the corridors. Where they can hide from what's going on. And to be able to take as big a chunk as we have. And just turn it into overlay. I just have a hard time with that.
So this is also including winter range, and so these animals need to be up. Out of the. Um, canyons and swales and all of that because. To search for forage, they need to have windswept areas where they don't have to. Get paw through as deeply into the snow.
Okay, thank you, I I, you know, where we are is everybody's gonna have their own opinion and 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 then. And it, you know, their opinions that are informed based on, yeah.
I ask my questions, okay? I look at this map the same way I'm looking at the Driggs one, the Victor one, all those kind of things. And. So Jake, can I have you pop up the G I S and go look to that? On the big screen? And go to the overlay map for me? Just share your screen up there, and I'm gonna go up and draw what I see the map to look like. Because that's gonna be my motion. That I'm gonna.
And I. Just interrupt, I don't.
I I think if you have specific.
Yeah.
I think if if you have specific pieces of the map that you would like to include in a, in your motion. Just, you know, generally reference, you know, this section between. Here and here, I think you've already talked about.
Can I bring a look at my screen? Also, I I think, do you kind of get what I'm saying? There's, there's certain areas that I can see need to be added. Okay, I agree with that, but then there's a whole bunch of areas that I just look at it and go. All it is is causing us more frustration because then we have to look at a natural resource, we have look this and that, and it's. It's really just there. I look at it as to cause problems. So. So we can start off and I can make a motion to deny and just go on, or we can actually come to some kind of form of compromise on the place. So that we can pass something good on to the B O C C. And that's what I'm.
I I'm supportive of that, I think what. We need to do. Is be able to articulate. With some level of clarity, the concerns you have. In where the overlay doesn't exist or does, and I think you need to call out specifically whether it's big game, grouse, et cetera. Um, so I I think maybe. We wanna try and take note of that, um, and try and define what those are, um, within a. We obviously can't spend all night, um, and I don't think our job isn't. We aren't the committee, but you have concerns, you should get them outlined. Um, I think we, I would, if we're gonna move them out forward, I want to make sure that we outline that. We need some transparency and clarification around how this is gonna be implemented and who it affects and the costs associated. Those, the the board needs to make that stated on record so that folks can hear it and know how it's gonna affect them.
Yeah.
So for me, I I need those two to to move it forward, and I'm totally comfortable if you have. Specific areas with your knowledge and Wade's knowledge where you feel that they need to consider how the map is drawn in those zones. Then they can go back to their resource, whether it's the committee or a third party. Assessment team to look at that and say, we wanna rework this in this way. Um, I think that's how we. Right now, is this committee, I think it's the only way we're gonna get forward.
Is your concern uh, uh, only in the big gray, big game? That that's where you're gonna make.
Well, and then the the extra little bits and grouse. You know, we've got a couple extra yellow ones here that are.
So, so. If you wanna put forward a motion that that specifies. Areas. For additional consideration, is that what you're, you know? Um, on the, on the specific map. Along with. Um, the other, you know, that that's what you're contemplating. I think we need a motion to consider, to take a vote.
Well, I'm I'm just trying to say, could they just make a motion flat out, deny the thing and then? And then we leave it up to the B O C C to. Take that into consideration and do what they're gonna do, but I would like him to know.
I I, I think we go this direction.
Okay, can you formulate that or?
Well, the best. The fun part is, is. We need. We need to get our, the little bit of, how to word the changes on our map. On the map that coincide with what I'm. So, well, let's just, so personally, I would say.
With big game.
The big game corridor. Leave everything that's down below Victor. Okay, so start.
Let's, maybe let's just look for the the items you want to change. It might make it more concise.
Would it be looking to change or requesting more detail?
Looking for them to consider. They're, they're gonna be the ones that are gonna be changing, so to to cause the discussion around specific.
Is what I'd say, cuz if you look at the map. The original map, um, right at Fox Creek. Well, it's actually goes right up to Darby Creek. Is where the original map ends on the big game corridor, okay, there's that one, and then it goes up and you've got all of the Teton Creek. Is there? And then you keep going up, and then you've got the, um, south lee. Is there? And and then you've got the bitch creek drainage, you know, up there, you know, that north. East corner really isn't terrible because that's all full canyon, that's where they're gonna hang out. All those kind of things, so I would say.
So, north of Fox Creek to.
Well, it's, it's actually. Because the original overlay starts at Darby Creek and then goes south.
Okay.
Leave all that original, skip up, leave the original in, um. Teton Creek, because we know that that's a highly trafficked area. Because we've already got development and everything going on in there, it's not gonna change at all, so why are we? Cause more pain on everybody. Jump up, leave the clawson one there. And then.
That's a long motion, dude.
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying to describe it. I'm trying to describe. The easiest thing to do is if I just drew a picture of the map and threw it up there and. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, we need to do that in words, though, um, so.
I I, you know, I just feel like we're getting into such a subjective. Thing when these guys have done this work, and I I understand your point and your, but it's just like.
Well, it's either we do that or it gets denied.
Well, I, or we, well, I don't know, let's see, let's, I I'll make a motion, see if it flies. I'd like to make, make a motion to to recommend approval of this map. Um, with the. Uh. The condition that the Board of County Commissioners does not. Uh, approve, finally approve the map until, um. Uh, they have made clear. Um, all of the implementation, how how the map will be implemented into the code.
And costs.
And 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 costs, um, particularly as it relates to. Um, you you know, landowners. I mean, I, let's get a motion and just get some, see if that flies, because then we don't have to go into the other, but it may not go, I don't know.
And I think to the, to that last. Part of that motion, it would. And the big thing for me would be just adding detail and clarity to if you're in this overlay, this is what. Right. For a landowner, it needs to be clear what they.
That's, that's the, the motion, that the, it, there's, they don't, this map does not get approved until clarity. Um, you know, as to who actually is impacted by it and the costs associated with it.
So that's an amendment to your motion?
That's, that's, yeah, clarification, trying to say that and not so articulate.
I have trouble with that.
Well, I just need a second, may not get a second, then we'll go on.
Sorry.
If there's no second, then we'll. Then we'll move on to. Um, I think what you're attempting to do is somehow. Add to that same kind of motion, the. The detailed areas of them and just.
Cuz there's just, there's just so much. Extra in there, that's what I'm like.
Okay, so, so we need a motion then that, um. Somehow clearly articulates the Board of County Commissioners what, what. Zones of the big game. Border.
Wyatt would have.
Can we draw it and then take a picture of it?
I I don't have the expertise to draw the map, and and so, and I, and I trust that you have your set of expertise, but I would rather there be. I I would rather look at saying.
A base model.
The the board. Take into consideration the volume of change between the two maps. And ask more questions themselves and of the public or something along those lines, engage again in a way that. Brings everybody back to the table, maybe bring in the large landowners that weren't there or ag or whatever it is. That's where I think we can make a recommendation that will actually make an impact, you drawing a map. It may be accurate from your contextual evidence, but. The process would be a lot better if it was done.
So I like your point, so the easiest thing then to do is we. We throw in the denial that we don't like the map the way it is drawn perfectly. And then we add these points in to our motion. Because there's just some issues, you know, like Lindsey's, you know, she'd like to see. The red as in, this is where they always are, this is kind of merge areas, you know. There's lots of different other little things that may make our life easier. So.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we. Move forward with, uh, fishing game proposal of figure four. Map. Excluding. All three city A O Is. And. A twenty percent reduction. On the rest of the big game corridors and. The bird habitat.
With. The extras. The figure it out, the rules.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, you know, yeah, and and and, yeah, Jim and. James and Tim's amendments. As far as details. I'm not gonna restate theirs, but I'll restate.
Definition around costs associated from the impact of implementing the map to landowners or future developers. And definition of the process. Of how this is implemented. On. For the larger concept of development.
I'll accept that amendment.
Good discussion.
I. Think we're getting closer, but I. Have a little trouble with a blanket twenty percent reduction. I would expect that a twenty percent reduction would then go back to. Uh. The experts that have developed the map and they would identify what's maybe less critical. I wonder if it could be more beneficial to have more delineation of what is habitat. Versus actually occupied by that species. And I don't know if that's relevant or helpful, um. But that's. My suggestion. And then. The other little issue that I take with this amendment is, um. Just asking for more clarification about what is gonna be required of landowners and developers. From a cost perspective, I think that's too broad. I mean, yeah, they gotta figure that out. But, um. They, I could see someone in their position saying, well, it's already clear in the, in the L D Rs. If you fall within the overlay. The, these people along the, um. Administrative chain. And decision-making chain have the right to request whatever studies they want. Um. I mean, that is clear. It's just not. Um.
I think if that's the way that the decision makers would want to articulate it, then that is their. Space to make that decision. Um. I I I, for me, I just feel like there is a whole lack of of. Understanding by a lot of the folks that have. Come in and spoken before us as well as I think ourselves. As to how this map would would be implemented as well as how it would impact the parties that it will, so, um. And and obviously, there's concerns about how it impacts the wildlife from. The the scale of the map, so I I think. That that clarity is part of the problem for for all of us, um. They can, recommendation however they choose to do it, um. I I think we just have to come to something that we're comfortable with. Moving forward, um. I mean, I can't speak to the twenty percent, I I don't. You know, that, again, I'm not an expert, um, I I think a harder look needs to be taken at. Habitat and pathways that are being used and that classification could be good, um, and then. I I think that there's obviously a reengagement that needs to occur with the public to really. Make sure that that. That this map is representative, and and that's where I think we could have the most power in our recommendation. Make sure that, that, that this map is representative, a- and that's where I think we could have the most power in our recommendation.
Can we get really specific and just say? Um, okay, we're going to request that the map define what is habitat versus actual habitated. And then within each overlay, we want to know what kind of study has to be undertaken. Can they be combined into one? And an approximate range of cost estimates for each type of study. Based on, I believe it has something to do with the scale or the size of the development or the land.
And I, I think the motion carries most of that, Lindsay. Because, because there is a study, I mean, the committee is going through a bunch of those, but that's. Their next phase is going to be how to implement and those kinds of things, so. So I think we're adding strength to that happening. As well as saying, hey, you better figure out what this is actually costing us and everything else, so I think. You know, from my perspective, it's a good recommendation, and then the twenty percent reduction, I think, just brings us a little bit closer to how it was. Rather than. Going through.
Yeah, I just, I, 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 I agree with all of that. I think the twenty percent is just an arbitrary number. I, I don't know what it is. So I, I, I don't know how we word it in a way that gets you comfortable, but, but also get sends a message it.
Well, a- a- along with that, I mean, in, on my motion, I would like to, you know, with the twenty percent reduction. I'm going to clarify that. I want it to be. Outside of public lands. On that reduction. Because they could take that map from beyond.
Right.
They go, oh, we did what Wade said, where he wanted twenty percent, we took the forest, we took the B L M. Heck, we, we won fifty percent. Where are he wrote? No.
Private land.
You're, yeah, I just don't want, I want to close that loophole. I want twenty percent.
Fine, but I, I, again, the twenty percent.
No, I'm just poking his dick at it.
Right, right. So, so how do we?
Well, I think.
Send the message it to, to consider.
Recommendation as well.
Is all it is. Yeah, unless someone wants to convince me of a different amendment on my motion.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
I'm good, I'm good as the secondary on that change.
All right, so is there any other discussion on the motion? So the motion, you're clear on the motion?
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah.
I cannot read it back to you, I'm sorry, I'm not, not listening to this.
Okay. So wait. Can you try again to restate the motion?
I'll restate my motion as long as you restate yours.
I can restate mine, but I, I just, but can we word something instead of the hard twenty percent? I, I think it, it would be more impactful than saying twenty percent, um, because if somebody then doesn't. It, that, it's arbitrary. Uh, what we're trying to get.
Any, any number is arbitrary.
What we're trying to get to is make sure that they consider. They really consider the data that's being presented from fish and wildlife, and then the interpretation that's being done by the map. And take into consideration all of the other effects it has. Maybe it's gone too far in the constraints that it's applying. What that percentage is, I don't know if we can.
I, I got something in mind. I'll, I'll come up with it. I'll make a motion. Well, I, I'll repeat my emotion rather than making it, re- re- instead of making a new one. I'll restate my motion. That fishing games report. That my motion adopts figure four map of fishing games report minus public lands. And city A O I's. Along with the bird. Habitat areas proposed. With a. Hard look at the details. And the lines correlating. To legit. To legitimate, not legit, legitimate, to legitimate habitat impact areas. With your addendum.
With clarification around the costs associated when this map is uh utilized. And the definition of the process of how this will be utilized for development.
Did Wyatt second it?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that you wanted to take out the bird habitat completely?
No, uh, uh, a- adopt the bird habitat proposed.
So city A O I's and.
And public lands.
Hey, any other discussion on the motion? And let's take a vote.
Mr. Kaufman?
All right.
Mr. Penzel?
Hi.
Mr. Waters?
Hi.
Mr. Wittenbruck?
Hi.
Mr. Weber?
Hi.
Bye.
Okay.
Can we take a break?
Let's take a ten minute break and then we'll.